All right, it is six o'clock. The vote's coming to order. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. St. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Sparks?
Uh, here.
Ms. Seven Saints?
Here.
Mr. Beer?
Here.
Mr. Inda?
Here.
Mr. Benble?
Here.
Chris, do we have any comments from citizens or delegations tonight?
We do not.
With that, we will move into our school showcase, Grove Elementary, and we have Tina here tonight.
Hello. Just came from, we have our first night of fast tonight at Grove. So, came there, scratched on half piece of pizza, this is with some families before I came over, but right now we have eight families out of ten who, I repeat that, they would be interested to show up, so that's a great turnout for our first night, so. I wanted to come talk to you today a little bit, if I'm gonna show links, can you do that magic with us?
Yes, I'll do that magic.
Okay. A little bit different spin on what the Grove learning community looks like. We have late start Mondays, which is when our professional learning community works together. Of course, we look at data, and I'll talk about that a little bit, but that's kind of a secondary purpose of what I wanna share today. I wanna share what we do at Grove to build a strong learning community among the adults in the building, which allows us then to be able to collaborate on sometimes challenging topics and including looking at data that might not always be the data we hope to see. So you have to build that community first, and that's what I wanna talk about. So I'm gonna touch on four different areas. Building trusting teams is first and foremost how we begin our year together. Living into our mission, vision, and values that have been created and get modified a bit every year, I'll talk about that briefly. Learn and lead teams, which is our shared decision-making model at Grove School, and then, of course, being intentional about collaborating around our data and our curriculum and the four questions that we ask. So building trust at the beginning of every year, we focus and we use those Mondays in September in our early, our August staff meetings, our September staff meetings, to work on building trust as a team. Much of the focus is on the teaching staff members, the certified teaching staff members, but you'll see this year we were able to build it because we have those Monday late starts where our special education aides in particular are able to join us for some of the learning that we do together. So we start out with, some of you may know Brené Brown. She is a social worker, she's written numerous books, she does all kinds of podcasts and speaking TED Talks, she's very popular and she's, we've done some research behind her. We talk together as a team about what it means to have a braving conversation. Brené Brown has an acronym for what does trust mean, and the acronym spells out braving. So we talk about that, and we've been revisiting that, this is probably the sixth year we've talked about that, and we talk about how sometimes you have to have challenging conversations with each other, and that requires trust. So we talk about what does trust look like and how to get curious when something happens or an adult, another staff member might say something that makes you go, "Ah, I'm not sure what that was." So that's what we sit, what we mean when we say having a braving conversation, being curious and going up to somebody and saying, "Hey, you said this and it didn't quite sit with me, can we talk about it?" So we talk a lot about that, so we can have those kind of conversations. Then we focus on working from our strengths. We've been doing the Clifton Strengths Finder as a staff since, I wanna say, six years. We started, we did it one year where we did it at every building, and Grove, we just kept going with it because we found it to be valuable in helping us work with one another. So every professional staff member that joins our district takes the Gallup Clifton Strengths Poll, we know what our top five are, our top five strengths are, and we have resources that we can use to have hard conversations with one another so that we can build on each other's strengths. We also learn about our shadow sides, like, oh, this is my strength, but that might also mean other people might see me as this and I need to be aware of that, right? And then, also in how we share and work together, we do, we have continued listening circles, and that's, I think we're near five doing our listening circles at Grove. Before every staff meeting, we have 15 minutes, staff get into their listening circles, I'm not part of any of them, we have three listening circles, they're facilitated by other teachers, and this year we're being very intentional about inviting our support staff. So today was our scheduled staff meeting, they had listening circles, and almost all of my special ed staff that work full-time stayed clocked in until four so they can be part of, part of the listening circles. So that's another way they have to support one another, which is basically what all of this is all about, so that we can be a team, we're all working on the same goals. When things are hard, we focus on that, we help each other through the hard things, and trust me, there's plenty of hard things. So that's, that's what we spent about six weeks on. So the next thing is thinking about being true to our mission, our vision, and our values. This is kind of, it's small, I'm not gonna go through all of that, but our mission and vision haven't changed for the last, I think we did, we did that about 10 years ago. But our values, you might notice, are a little bit different than maybe the way some other schools have done their values. So we have several values and our commitments to each other, a few of them use our, use best practice to reach students, continue to build a culturally responsive environment, promote opportunities, promote opportunities for joyful learning, model encourage a growth mindset, collaborate as professional learning community to support the growth of one another as we, as we improve instruction and assessment for students. So each of these commitments is tied to a learn and lead team. So this is where our shared decision-making comes in, in our shared collaborative, shared model of shared leadership. So we have our guiding coalition and listed some of the things, either just a few things that the guiding coalition does, but that's the leadership team that leads our work when we're looking at data, when we're planning professional development, when we're talking about how are we going to improve tier-one best practices, how are we gonna make that work? And then we have four in the middle where we really call them learn and lead teams. So the, each of those teams learns things and then leads the staff in those things. So the BMW is our behavior and mental wellness team, that's been the focus on social emotional learning. CRE was our culturally responsive equitable environment team, and that's been in place for quite a while, and those are some of the things that they've done. Then we have a joyful learning team, home and school partnerships team, and you can see under there, those are all things that they lead us in. Starting this year, our BMW team and our CRE team are combined, and now they are our responsive practices team. We've been doing lots of responsive, or restorative, sorry, restorative practices work over the year and over the years, and as we're studying it intentionally, we realize we're, we're doing well, and we've got a lot of room to expand on some of the more advanced pieces of restorative practices. By putting that, those two very committed groups together, we're gonna be able to make really good gains in that area, too. And then our intervention team, which is really our academic MLSS team. So, just a smattering of some of the things we do. And then this is, these are the tools and processes that we use for collaboration in looking at data, I've got links to all those, I don't know if, if there's anything intentional or that we wanna spend time looking at, it's probably similar to things you've seen, yeah, we'll cut down the norms. So we have these norms for working together at the top, but about three years ago when we were digging into data more deeply, we realized we needed to add some norms for looking at data, and that's on the bottom. So we have these specific norms that we talk about anytime we're digging into data that might make us feel a little bit uncomfortable or a little less joyful about some of the data we might look at. Being curious, helping each other get, get at, get better at what we do, so we look at data as a way to help us improve ourselves. And then, if you go to the collaboration agenda, the third one, so some of you know that Grove has been doing a late start. We started about two, I think two full years before the district, maybe three, and we did that just by providing childcare at the beginning of the day, and we would get about 45 minutes of good collaboration in Monday mornings without changing the bus schedule. So our agenda template has changed, every year we look at it and say, what worked, what do we wanna tweak to make it more intentional? So this year, every grade level has their SMART goals and math and reading, and we added this year, if you scroll down where it says question grade level and question one, question two, so every time whoever they're collaborating with, they can put that in the dropdown menu and which question are they focusing their discussion on. So that question piece was something the team guiding coalition agreed would be good to get. So we're being intentional about which of those four questions are we focusing our conversation on. So we're really proud of that, and it's been working for us, we, like I said, we make tweaks every year. And then our schedule, again, that shape, that's at the bottom, the late start schedule, we've been adjusting that every year, too. We used to work really, but we would schedule times for every grade level to meet with the math interventionist, to meet with the reading interventionist, to meet with the student services team, and we would, we would do that on a rotating basis, so that every four to five weeks, they would get an opportunity to meet with reading, to meet with math, to meet with student services, so we would fill that in with the dates. This year we're trying something a little bit different, now that we're all collaborating in the same area of the building, our interventionists are gonna be much more readily available because we're all together in the same space, which my staff was really excited to hear about, like, why didn't you think of that sooner? So that's, we're excited to see how that works. So if we need to talk to our math interventionist and we're second grade, but she's working with third grade, we can just say, hey, Teresa, when you're done, can you pop over? Because we're all gonna be together. So less specific planning or scheduling and more fluidity in signing up for times when you might need some of it. So, but what I wanted to share was the meat of all the stuff that we did to help be a learning team before we get into the collaboration and data, so. Any questions?
I was, just, this is wonderful, I mean, I look black and white on, and I was especially intrigued with your be curious, not coach mental, what's that going? I mean, that's wonderful.
Yeah, well, we practice it, yeah, we have a theme every year, and about three years ago, our theme was detectives and being curious about each other, but also being curious about student behavior, looking at student behavior, that's through a restorative lens, like, hmm, what's going on there, like beneath the behavior, right? So we've talked about that quite a bit over the years, too, how to jump into conclusions, just being curious about it.
Thank you, Keith.
Yeah. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, fantastic update. Our next item is the student rep report. Embryell, what's new this month?
Okay, so homecoming kickoff took place on October 5th. There was a cornhole tournament, banner painting, and powder buff, which was boys volleyball. It was between seniors and juniors, and the seniors won. Students earned spirit points throughout the homecoming week by attending kickoff, dressing up for homecoming spirit days, or winning games at the two assemblies that we had on Monday and Friday. Homecoming was on October 11th, and the theme was Rio. As for upcoming events, the French club will be hosting crepe day on October 18th. Crepe day is a walking event at the Southwood County Stadium where crepes will be sold to raise money for the family center. The Day of Caring will take place on October 25th. Many clubs take part in this, including Student Council, National Honor Society, and HOSA. Lastly, DECA's Tricker Can, which is an event where students collect non-perishable food items to donate to Focus Food Pantry, will take place on October 31st.
Perfect, thank you for the report this month, lots going on, and thank you. Next, I would move on to entertain approval of the minutes.
I would make a motion to approve the regular board of education meeting minutes from September 8th, 2025, the special board of education closed meeting from September 8th of 2025, the special board of education closed meeting 5:00 PM on September 22nd, the special board of education closed meeting at 6:30 on September 22nd, the special education, board of education closed meeting at 5:00 on September 29th, and the special board of education, special board of education closed meeting at 6:30 on September 29th.
I have a motion to approve the regular board of education meeting minutes of September 8th, the special board of education closed meeting of September 8th, the special board of education closed meeting on September 22nd, 5:00 PM, the special board of education closed meeting of September 22nd at 6:30, and the special board of education closed meetings on September 29th at 5:00 PM, and the special board of education closed meeting on September 29th at 6:30. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The minutes carry. Next, we move into committee reports, and first, Ed Services, Kathy for the report.
Thank you, Troy. The Educational Services Committee met on October 6th, 2025, the meeting was called The Order at 6:00 PM. We had one public comment, Mrs. Anne Stanton, a parent, expressed concern with the proposed start date for the 26-27 school year of August 24th, 2026. She stated that many Wisconsin Rapids Public School students participate through 4H at the Central Wisconsin State Fair, and the proposed start date conflicts with the date of the 2026 fair. She is concerned about students missing the first week of school and falling behind. She feels they should not have to choose between school and the fair. And there were no actionable items at this meeting, there were two updates. The first update was the new course and curriculum modifications and proposals, most of which would take effect in the 26-27 school year. Roxanne Filts, our Director of Teaching and Learning, explained that a number of new course proposals and course modifications brought forward by staff have been presented to various leadership teams and have been considered, considered by the Council for Instructional Improvement Committee. Many of the proposals are a result of Act 60, or Wisconsin Act 60, which was recently passed by the legislature. And Wisconsin Act 60 requires all Wisconsin public high school students to complete a half-credit of personal financial literacy to graduate, starting with class of 2028. And we have included that as a graduation requirement in the district before, but the change is that only teachers holding a license to teach social studies, planning and consumer sciences, or business and information technology are allowed under the law to teach personal financial literacy courses, and this has resulted in changes in current classes which previously enabled students to earn personal financial literacy credits. So this begins with math, and Stacy Moyer, who is Lincoln High School math teacher, and I believe department chair, if I'm not mistaken, she brought forward some proposals. The first was to eliminate accelerated financial algebra and Lincoln Virtual School accelerated financial algebra, and it's, it's no longer able to be used for the financial literacy credit and math both. Also, these classes have had low enrollment. She also proposed decreasing financial algebra from one credit to a half credit. The financial literacy standards are being removed due to math teachers not being able to teach financial literacy or to teach classes where students gain financial literacy credit, so therefore reducing it to the half credit. And then the math department is proposing adding tech college math, which would be one credit, and this is a dual-credit class, the proposal, the proposed class is dual-credit with Midstate Technical College, and will count for its business management degree program in the future. And finally, the math department is proposing modifying prerequisites for intermediate algebra to a C minus or better in algebra and geometry, which are considered passing grades in tech college math or teacher approval. Struggling students can take tech college math if they don't meet the prerequisite grade requirements in intermediate algebra. Then Paula Reeves, the Lincoln High School Social Studies teacher, and I also believe department chair, she has some proposals in social studies. First is to change the names of Principles of Economics to Money Matters, Economics and Financial Skills for Life, and Principles of Economics Blended to Principles of Economics Blended to Money Matters, Economics and Financial Skills for Life Blended. Both courses will come as fulfillment of a financial literacy requirement only and not as a social studies credit, again, because you can't get credit in two things for the one course. AP macroeconomics and AP microeconomics will no longer fulfill the financial literacy requirement under Act 60, but will continue to come as social studies credits. Valcedora Witz came forward with some art proposals, she is a art teacher at Lincoln High School and Rams. She proposed adaptive arts for grades six through eight, and students would have an IDP to participate in this class and then rate her arts. This class is open to all students, including students that are not currently able to participate in art classes. The goal is to provide a dedicated class to students who will need more of a focus on building foundational skills and develop skills and processes that lead them to successful expression, and they haven't really been able to participate in our current art courses, so this is a great opportunity for those kids. We had some proposals from physical education, Roxy presented those for the physical education teachers. They are proposing changing grade levels for life responders, allowing sophomores to participate in that class. They want to offer A, B, and C sections of strength and fitness, so students can enroll in that multiple times. They want to change the name of PE2 to Team Sports, I think the name of PE2 makes it sound like it's a required course, and it's not, and it really is a Team Sports class, and then drop aerobics triathlon due to a lack of interest, apparently the course is not running a while. And finally, Abby Wills, our Lincoln High School teacher from the Special Education Department and also department chair there, she proposed REI Resource, which is something that students are required to take, and they currently do take it, but they don't receive credit, and so the proposal is to allow students to receive credit for this class when they take it. And it's basically, it's a support class where students are required to do a variety of things to enhance their skills and their abilities and, and help them pass other classes as well. The second item, which is an update, is the waiver to begin the 26-27 school year prior to September 1st of 2026. Roxy explained that the state of Wisconsin requires public school districts to provide and fund transportation for students who attend parochial or private schools within the district's boundaries. Parochial and private schools often begin their school year prior to September 1st, which is the legal date when public schools can start. WRPS did meet with representatives from the parochial schools, and they confirmed, the parochial schools confirmed that they will not be changing their start date. Therefore, to save the districts in class, WRPS has explored the idea of starting school prior to September 1st and presented that information to the committee. For public schools to start before September 1st, a waiver must be submitted to the state by January 1st of 2026. One potential way to achieve cost savings for the district is for WRPS to start on August 24th, 2026, and conclude the school year the Friday before Memorial Day, which could help reduce unnecessary transportation expenses, and the amount of $12,782.42. A staff appearance survey was conducted last spring, which included many questions for, for parents and staff. One of the questions asked was, should the district explore the idea of starting the school year in the last full week of August and finishing the school year by the end of May? The results indicated the following: 63% of staff and 60% of parents said yes, 23% of staff and 25% of parents said no, 14% of staff and 15% of parents said not sure. And I believe there was about a 20% participation rate by parents? Ms. Filts has developed a proposal for the 26-27 school year calendar that includes an earlier start date, which would align with the schedules of parochial and private schools. The state asks that the Friday before Labor Day is a non-report day for both public and private schools to respect family holiday plans. Again, if WRPS has the same start date and end date as parochial and private schools, the estimated transportation savings for 26-27 is $12,782. Roxy shared benefits and concerns for moving the start date up. Some of the benefits include that graduation would not be held on Memorial Day weekend, that alignment with advanced placement and dual-credit courses, many ECP and college-level exams are administered nationally in May, an earlier start date would give WRPS students additional instructional days to prepare before testing, improved pacing for state assessments beginning earlier provides more instructional days prior to spring testing windows for ACT, pre-ACT, and the forward exam, giving students a greater opportunity to learn and, to learn and apply material before assessments. An earlier finish date would be concluding the school year prior to Memorial Day, which would allow families to align with summer travel and enrichment opportunities. Sport seasons begin in early August, and those students who can only participate when they are physically attending school due to transportation issues would be able to participate the entire season, and other clubs and organizations could begin planning their work with students earlier in August. Concerns that were presented from families and staff about starting school before September 1st, 2026 include a conflict of student schedules that participate in the Central Wisconsin State Fair in Marshfield, we have a lack of air conditioning in some buildings, it would be a shorter summer break the first year of implementation, concerns about having the classrooms and holidays prepped for the first year of implementation by our custodial staff, and then questions about summer school dates and how that would align. Various district committees have been presented information on the potential 26-27 school year calendar change. Majority of the members of the QEC and CII committees voted in favor of the earlier date. Mr. Eskimison, our superintendent, presented the information to the superintendent's Student Advisory Council, which includes 18 Lincoln High School and Rams students, and there was a unanimous vote in favor of starting earlier. A letter was received from the private and parochial schools in favor of WRPS starting on August 24th, 2026. Mr. Eskimison stated that many districts are requesting waivers to start before September 1st, 2026. The board expressed concerns that starting school on August 24th, 2026 would create conflicts for students involved in 4H who participate in the Wisconsin, in the Central Wisconsin State Fair. Many students have spent a significant amount of time preparing for the fair, and the board would like to support all students in their interest and activities. These students would most likely either miss the first week of school due to their participation in the fair, or it would affect their participation in the fair. It was also noted that at least 50-some students would be impacted and potentially more. The board requested that a survey be conducted to gather feedback from families regarding the proposed August 24th, 2026 start date. It was emphasized the importance of encouraging as many families as possible to participate so a broad range of perspectives can be considered. The survey would help assess the potential impact of starting the school year earlier. The results could provide valuable information to guide the board in making an informed decision about the 26-27 school calendar. And Mr. Eskimison will begin preparing the survey, which will be distributed to families. Ms. Filts summarized things by stating that a proposed change to the spring break calendar will be presented this month to the board, so we can align with private and other area schools regarding spring break, and that we can get that, at least that that decision made this month. And also, WRPS will maintain consistency with late start Mondays, professional development days, professional learning community time, with private and parochial schools adjusting their schedules. Again, there are no consent agenda items, items that will be considered next month will be for the Items that will be considered next month will be for the, I'm sorry, the committee reviewed future agenda items, and we'll be looking next month at new course curriculum modifications and proposals, as well as our Start College Now and early college credit program applications. And the meeting was adjourned at 7:37 PM, and I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 6th, 2025 Educational Services Committee.
A motion to approve the regular committee meeting minutes of October 6th, 2025. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes carry. Our approval. Our next report, Business Services. John?
Thank you, Troy. Business Services also met on Monday, October 6th. Our meeting was called to order at 7:40 PM, and we've had no public comment. Out of our meeting, we have three actionable items. Anybody have questions about any of them? If none, we'll start with BS 1, which is a 660301 into district agreement for the Project Search program. And we have a student this year from Adams Friendship, and we have a student from Nacusa. So I recommend and I move to enter into a 66.03.01 cooperative agreement with the Adams Friendship Area School District and the School District of Nacusa for the students attending the Project Search program. Then, we have a 76603 for a student that's also from Nacusa. So the committee moves, and I recommend, to enter into a 66.03.01 cooperative agreement with the School District and Nacusa for this student. And it has to deal with joint custody between parents, and they are going to be in our school half the time and in a different district the other half. And their home school district is Nacusa. That's why we had to do the 6603 for this one. And our last one, we reviewed the parent contract transportation and pay to ride. This has been a point of contention among parents for years, and the discussion Ron told us is that we are basically changing the fee. It's $135 currently for a single and $200 for a family, I believe, of two or more. We're going to change the fee to $100 per trimester for one or more students at multiple student daycares. And if a family only needs half of it, they will have to pay 50%, so they only need it in the morning or the afternoon on a one-way trip. We're going to adjust that also by 50%. So the committee moves, and I recommend, to reduce the current parental parent contract transportation fee to $100 per trimester for one or more students per family at multiple student daycares. Families only need transportation one way, the full fee is a month, is reduced by 50%. This fee may be waived under the guidance of School Board Policy 6152 for the students who are in financial need.
A motion to approve items BS 1 through BS 3. Chris, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Enda?
Yes.
Ms. Sevencents?
Yes.
Ms. St. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Ben?
Yes. Then our ballot was updates and reports, and it was a busy summer, so we have lots of updates on parking lot maintenance, building maintenance, the playgrounds, and a couple of placements of water heaters at Ram's, some software for back-to-school software purchases. Would like to point out that if, there's a lot of good things that happened this summer, so the playgrounds, I know I talked about them before, they're almost all done now. Actually, I think Washington is finished as of the meeting Tuesday, when I attended their parent-teacher meeting. Check the playgrounds out. They are just phenomenal and very nice, and they're all open to the public all year. So I mean, Woodside Playground, I've driven by that multiple times during the summer, and it's always packed. There's always people there, and there's people at the picnic tables with even lunches. The other thing is, is that Washington has the update through the Community Foundation and Rafferty Area Soccer. The lighting is up on the field now. I'm not sure if it's operational, but the lighting is up. The walking path is complete around the inside of the soccer complex. And then, the last one we've had an update on is the Woodside Outdoor Classroom. It is now complete, and drive by on the backside of Woodside and take a look at that and check it out. So a lot of good things happened to our schools this summer, and they're coming to, built to coming due, so that was our big experience.
And Ed confirms that the lights are working in the soccer fields. I know they were doing a light study the other night, or was it tonight?
Tonight, about 7:30.
Ed's getting over to verify on the lighting.
There you go. All right, our second, we had an update on state general aid. The most recent general aid estimate received by the district on September 26th was $444,764 less than the amount provided by DPI on July 1st. The estimated reduction of aid would result in a tax impact approximately $23 per year for a $200,000 home. More to be determined on that. Hopefully, it will change, but we won't know for sure until October 1st, is it?
Yep, we got our estimates on October 1st and October 15th, which would be set for the tax levying for the 2020 second.
Right, it's October 15th, we should notify, which is in a couple of weeks. We had some donations. We have a donation for $1,000 for student lunches, $270 for cab vouchers, $500 for the children's theater, another one for $500 for the children's theater, and a thousand for the children's theater. So then, we appreciate all donations, and we make sure that our business department sends thank yous for individuals involved in those donations. And I already hit the outdoor classroom at Woodside, so we have three consent agenda items, and those have been discussed and forwarded out. Right now, we have no future agenda items, and our meeting was adjourned at 7:57 PM. So with that, I submit the ballot of meeting minutes for approval.
I have a motion to approve the regular committee meeting minutes of Business Services Committee meeting of October 6th, 2025. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes carry. Our next committee report is Personnel Services Committee. Personnel Services Committee met on Monday, October 6th. The meeting was called to order at 7:42 PM, and we did not have any public comment present. Before us tonight are two consent agenda items. Does anybody have any questions or want anything to add? Hearing nothing. Our first item, PS 1, the committee recommends and I move to approve of the listed six support staff appointments. And PS 2, the committee moves and I recommend to approve of the following six listed support staff resignations. There is a motion in the second, or excuse me, there's a motion to approve PS 1 and PS 2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. And we did not have any updates before us. The meeting was adjourned at 7:44 PM. With that, I would move to approve the regular committee minutes of Personnel Services of October 6th, 2025. It's weird to do both sides of the coin. There's a motion to approve the Personnel Committee meeting minutes of October 6th, 2025. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes carry.
And I'd have to note that it's the first ever that I've been on the board a two-minute PS.
Very brief. Yes, very efficient. All right, thank you, everyone, for the committee reports this month. Our next item on the agenda, if any, our Agenda Referrals and Information Requests. Does anybody have anything this month? All right, then moving on, the next item is the Legislative Agenda. Just a couple of Capitol legislative happenings to talk about this month, but I'll be relatively brief. The first piece that I want to talk about was from late September. The Assembly GOP announced the creation of four new speakers task force, task horses. These task forces have become a routine part of the legislative process in the Assembly, and our committees created at the discretion of the speaker to research and produce legislation around particular topics. One task force this session will likely have implications for K-12 education, and this is the created, namely created Task Force on Protecting Children, which is chaired by a representative out of Sheboygan Falls that I am unfamiliar with, Lyndy Brill, must be new. Nonetheless, she will be chairing, this individual will be chairing this task force, and in a recent interview with the leader report, the representative spoke on the committee's focus, goals, timeline, and potential challenges they will face. So anything out of that task force, I'll be sure to update us on in the coming months, their happenings and their business. The next piece, just speaking to the federal side for a minute, the federal government on October 1st officially entered a shutdown as senators failed to come to an agreement on appropriations prior to the start of the new fiscal year. The Legislative Blog has put up resources on their federal updates webpage for members seeking further information on what the impact will be on staffing and resources available through the U.S. Department of Education. For specific information on the shutdown's impact on Wisconsin, the DPI has created the DPI's Ed Leaders Dispatch. There's a link on the Legislative Blog and also on their website as well, which has Wisconsin-specific implications of this shutdown. The next piece to look at is legislative activity has been ramping up within the last couple of weeks. The state Capitol has been seeing activity pick up lately, including on a number of bills that will have an impact on K-12 education and school board operations. The Assembly was in session last week and has another session day scheduled for tomorrow, Tuesday, October 14th. The Senate has not been in session since the budget passage in early July, and in a couple of minutes, I'll have an update on their, hot off the press, their expected return tomorrow as well. After next week, the last reserved legislative floor period for the year is November 11th through 20th, before the chambers break for the holidays. While four days are, of course, the pinnacle of legislative activity, many hearings and committee votes have been taking place lately. The WASB Legislative Blog and Tracker has an expanded view on some of the bills that they're tracking, as well as latest action tomorrow and beyond. Our next update is pertaining to a dual enrollment bill that is designed to alter regulations and promote access, which is now circulating. Last week, a draft bill was circulated for cosponsorship that would add to and alter the state's current regulations on dual enrollment, named LRB 5100. This bill, authored by folks in the lower and upper chambers, of course, seeks to promote and increase access to dual enrollment for high school students. Dual enrollment is the general term used for when high school pupils earn credits from an institution of higher education while still enrolled in high school. The initiative was initially pitched a few weeks ago at a press conference as Assembly Republicans, a press conference held by Assembly Republicans, is one of the chamber's top education priorities of the new session. In essence, the bill sets out to establish a new council on dual enrollment through the Department of Workforce Development and alter the way credits are transferred between institutions, change deadlines to enroll in these programs, and require new notifications that school boards must deliver to families. This draft bill, as it's circulating, I'll be sure to have updates along the steps of the way on that. And the newest piece, which was just put out today, the Senate will be in session tomorrow, October 14th, to hold a floor session, which is their first since July, which I mentioned. The agenda for the day includes three different bills impacting K-12 school operations, including two that if passed will proceed to the governor for his signature. AB 2, which generally prohibits cellphone or personal device usage during instructional time, will be discussed. Assembly Bill 5, AB 5, requires school materials be made available for inspection by district residents, were previously passed by the Assembly back in February. The Senate will also take up Senate Bill 136, which will allow additional backup lights to be installed on school buses. So these bills will be up for debate tomorrow, and that will take us into November, and we'll see what comes of it.
Just like the question, then, what are they going to do with ACCP and SCM, which are already pretty robust dual, dual-credit enrollment programs? So are they saying about getting rid of those, or are they going to be the same?
They just want to develop a council now, of course, that would put more restrictions on it as far as what you need to report, what the board needs to report. So it's just in the early talks right now, things that they don't want to get rid of the program. They feel what they're doing is what they're more efficient.
I think so.
That's what.
I'd make the difference, okay.
I will go with that.
Okay, thank you. For no other questions, we will move on to action on the bills.
I'd make a motion to note the September 2025 receipts in the amount of $6,815,965.53 and to approve the September 2025 disbursements with the exception of check number 115558 in the amount of $4,973,195.87.
I have a motion to note the September 2025 receipts in the amount of $6,815,965.53 and to approve September 2025 dispersments with the exception of check number 115558 in the amount of $4,973,195.87. Chris, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Mr. Enda?
Yes.
Ms. Sevencents?
Yes.
Ms. St. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes.
Perfect, and now moving into new business, our first item, employee appointments, resignations, and retirements. Anything new this month, Brian?
Nothing.
Perfect, that's good news. Great, our next item is update and discussion on the School Perceptions Community Survey, looking at review and feedback.
So in your board package, I did provide you the School Perception Survey, which proposed the finalizing to send out to our community members. That included a timeline of kind of leading up to an operational referendum for April and what that would look like. So in your board package, the survey actually begins on page 5, and it discusses that we have two challenges within our school district. The first is a lack of state funding, that state funding has not kept up with increasing costs. In addition, our referendum was recently passed, the concurrent referendum of $2 million a year for curriculum and technology expires with this current fiscal year. In addition, aging facilities and consolidation of facilities is important. Replacing aging infrastructure, we'll go into a little bit. Our agriculture program has grown at Lincoln, and we no longer have the space or the amenities to expand that program in our current environment. Adding middle school special education numbers over the last, or classrooms over the last five to six years, we, our school district enrollment is down to about 600 students. However, our special education population overall, it's about 150. In addition, we're up almost 150 or 200 in students that have 504 plans. So smaller environments needed for private students, which we don't have access to that at Rams. Expanding our inviting Woodside, we need a new cafeteria and gymnasium within that building, to meet the needs of that building. In addition, THINK is not a true two-track building, and with growing special education needs at THINK, looking at what that is needed there. And then lastly, this facility here, old Lincoln or East Junior High and Central Office needs in that area. So it kind of explains it on the front page and ways for families or parents to take the survey and community members. The next page talks about financial challenges, and you'll see some areas highlighted there. One is our state aid. We don't know that number, it's a little bit too early, we'll be getting that number here on the 15th. In addition, it used to be that the per pupil dollar figure that school districts received was adjusted for inflation, that no longer occurred in 2009. And to forecast out if we would have just kept school financing at the pace of inflation, nothing above inflation, what that would mean per pupil for us for the school district, that will be filled in as well when we get our final numbers on the 15th. The next page talks about financial challenges, and you'll see some areas highlighted there. One is our state aid, we don't know that number, it's a little too earlier. We'll be getting that number here on the 15th. In addition, it used to be that the per pupil dollar figure that school districts received was adjusted for inflation, that no longer occurred in 2009. And to forecast out if we would have just kept school financing at the pace of inflation, nothing above inflation, what that would mean per pupil for us for the school district, that will be filled in as well, when we get our final numbers on the 15th. One of the areas you will see later on in the survey is a possible expansion of 4K to full-day 4K, and how we can meet the student family needs. I've got multiple phone calls over the summer asking about that. And we're declared a daycare desert in this area, that there's a lack of daycare options for families. So not that we're saying 4K is daycare, but it does provide full-day for families relating to 4K. To try to maintain our class size, the most recent numbers we just ran at elementary level, our class size overall is 20.1 K5. And we'd like to maintain that number right around that overall, and that is in there. We don't know what's happening with our federal funding, and once again, it talks about the 2001 operational referendum. Eighty-seven percent of school districts in Wisconsin have pursued a referendum. In the last five years, 75% have pursued a referendum. In the last 12 months, 20, over 20% have pursued a referendum. And we're asking, or is community member would support basically replacing our operational referendum that expires at this current school year in the future. The second question, the next page expands upon that of what that operational referendum would look like, with three criteria. So we're looking at about a $1.5 million deficit on top of the $2 million non-recurring referendum expiring. So that is 3.5 million for the 26, 27 school year. So that would allow us to maintain most programs and services, and continue to pay to updates for technology, curriculum, safety, and security. We anticipate because of good financial stewardship of this board and the district in the past, of that costing about approximately $10 per 100,000, working with PMA as our financial advisors, which is relatively a smaller dollar figure than we would have anticipated working with them. A second option would be $4 million per year, and we would do everything in option one. We would attempt to maintain our class sizes, and one thing that the administration team felt strongly about was eliminating the book material fee at the beginning of the school year, if that was the dollar figure that we pursued, it was a 4 million. And we believe that would cost approximately $14 per year, per $100,000 household. And then option three is 4.5 million. Do everything in option one and two, and look at expanding 4K from a half-day program to a full-day option, and making employee compensation competitive with neighboring districts. You're well aware as a board, as Brian brings to you in Personnel Services, that we are not competitive in some of our peers when it comes to teaching staff, teacher salaries. And we would like to do that, so our neighboring districts have added that as part of their operational reference in the past, to maintain that competitive salary. We believe that would cost, working with PMA, approximately $17 per $100,000 of property value. The average household house in the Wisconsin School District is a pretty, about $231,000. So that is the operational funding. And then we discuss facility updates. As we're well aware, taxpayers supported us in phase one of a long-term facility plan, approximately five years ago. And we would like to continue the next phases of that plan. We have roofs that need to be replaced in two buildings. HVAC and electrical equipment, that is outdated in many of our buildings. And including, we would like to air condition our elementary buildings that currently do not have air conditioning, which would involve some electrical needs in those facilities. Technology, infrastructure, plumbing, exterior doors, windows, and brick, floors, ceilings, parking lots. In addition, much of the last referendum also went for security camera systems and upgrades. We'd like to build that in more operationally in some of the operational referendum, because you're not going to wait, but a lot of that equipment is at a five to seven-year time span. In addition, with our new playgrounds, we would like to be able to adequately secure those areas. Firearms systems need to be updated, and the LHS elevator no longer meets current ADA accessibility guidelines. And then updated classrooms and support spaces. We've done a nice job modernizing our science classrooms in phase one at Lincoln, but we would like to modernize our CTE area, our Career and Technical Education areas, in addition to our AA areas. Many restrooms are outdated and small. The Woodside cafeteria is very small, and the gymnasium is very small for the number of students that attend in that environment. We would like to make, put the new, the current gymnasium become the cafeteria, and then build a new gymnasium to meet the community needs at Woodside. The LHS bleachers and press box need upgrading, and the press box is a wooden press box, and the floors beginning to have issues. In addition, the bleachers in the fuel house are original to the fuel house, and are not ADA accessible for many of our community members. And then we already talked about special education at the middle and elementary. So we were looking at a facility question. We anticipate that facility question, we worked with Myer Instruction and PRA, our architects, to go through Ed's tenure plan, and then look at the overall needs. And the dollar figure that we're going to put in the survey here is approximately 70 million, which is about double, I'll be honest with you, of the last referendum. But based upon, once again, the good financial stewardship of this board, the expiring of the paying deficits in the current facility referendum passed five years ago, as well as the energy exemption expiring that was done in '17 and '18, we believe we can do approximately this dollar figure for minimal tax impact. Which is, once again, great financial stewardship of the board, to be able to do that, to be able to do those upgrades with very minimal financial tax impact. And then the second part of that really talks about how we want to maintain our facilities, because they are community facilities. Our facilities are open basically from 6:00 AM in the morning, some of our facilities open earlier than 6:00 AM, well into the evening for youth basketball, wrestling, boy scouts, girl scouts, theater productions, et cetera, so.
Pool is 5:00 AM.
The pool is 5:00 AM exactly, until about 9:00 or 10:00 at night. So we're great financially, with great ability to have the community come and use our facilities, and we'd like to maintain those facilities for the future as well. And then the next page is just really an overall satisfaction of what the community feels for our school district. And then some demographic information as well, and where people live. And if we want to make sure our survey is accurate, so you'll see that we ask if they're a WRPS employee. So to get the survey as an employee and as a community member, we really don't want to try to double-come people, so we ask them to share if they're a current employee or not. In the timeline, we hope to finalize the survey by the end of this week, for it to go to print, and the anticipation, we anticipate as an email survey, October 30th, and the survey to be in mailboxes on November 6th. We plan on hosting a community session the night of November 6th, that Thursday night at Lincoln, for anybody having questions or concerns about the survey. And the survey deadline would be November 24th, with survey results presented to you at the December Board Meeting. And then if you do decide to pursue a operational referendum, that resolution will need to be passed by, at the January Board Meeting, for April 7th. Kind of lays out the process, as well as the survey. Working with School Perceptions, they presented the last survey to you, which was the parent staff survey, and they worked with the district at the most recent referendum as well.
Ron, could you touch on the fact that the school district funding is not like any other funding in the world? In that the fact that we will be rewarded as a school district, we are rewarded for debt, as opposed to being penalized for debt?
Correct, so we're approximately, in the most recent, and we presented the budget to you initially in July. Aaron had documented in there that we're approximately 67% state-funded, I think it might have been 65%. And which means that of the debt we issue, the state's going to pay us back in state aid in about 65%. So really, if you're going to say you're a $1 million referendum, $650,000 comes back to the district in state aid, $350,000 comes from the state taxpayers, or excuse me, local taxpayers through the property tax. What you will have noticed, as John had talked earlier about our state aid being reduced, a lot of districts in the state have passed referendums recently. The two largest being Milwaukee and Madison. So as they pass referendums, there's more state aid that flows to the districts that pass those referendums. So it's one of the reasons why our state aid is reduced, because there's only a certain amount of state aid that is issued. And as you have referendum debt, more state aid flows to you, depending if you're a state-aided district. There are some districts in the state that are not state-aided, because they are so property-rich, they don't get much state aid. So in our district, like I said, we're about 65% state-aided. So as we do not have debt, that will continue to negatively impact the amount of state aid that we have, which will increase the operational flow of the district onto the local taxpayers. So it's very different than how you operate your own budget at home. You want to pay down your mortgage, you want to not have that debt. State financing of schools is very contrary in how you operate your own financial textbook, or checkbook at home. It's that because of the state aid reimbursement and us being a state-aided district, more of that aid would flow to us at a referendum function. Very different than how we operate.
Which then, lessons that you can take on the local property tax people?
Correct.
Or property tax people.
I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
Is that enough time? I mean, if we're looking at getting results, January 27th, or well, that's a deadline for the.
You'll have results, you'll, the December Board meeting, December 8th, I think, is the.
I'm just thinking, getting the word out, doing all the things we have to do to get a community to buy in, neutral.
I feel confident in that, yes. The reason we're, the reason there's one referendum question being asked is the state only allows you to have two referendum questions a year, being very upfront, if successful in April. And Borg willing, and you look at the community survey results, we would probably come back in November for the second part of being a capital referendum, do those needs.
Well, that was my second question. Are they recommending that we still enroll, or are they more successful when they come through together?
The last referendums that the district did, the capital and the operating were together. The state law though allowed you to go back that same year or another year, you could do more than two questions during the year. Personally, I don't want to do two questions at the same time. If unsuccessful on the operating referendum in April, that allows us to come back in November, to spend the next few months talking to the community, and come back to the operating referendum in November. If it's unsuccessful in April and we ask both questions, we will not have the ability to ask a question then, for another whole year.
Right, okay. And then the other question I have is, I'm concerned about East being included in this. I just, again, public perception, I understand the need to do some things over there, believing, I get it. But I'm not sure the community will get that, and I wonder why we're doing that, since we're not using it as a school.
That will be part of the plan of presentation, is that we plan on utilizing the facility to a greater extent and modifying the facilities.
I'm just wondering how to respond to that, that concerns me a little bit.
Other thing we can tell right now is that the fieldhouse over here is used almost year-round by the city of Wisconsin Rapids for their recreational departments. And along with other entities in the community that use it, like the Archery Club, and multiple blood drive things are done through, or it's probably done in the cafeteria, but they do. That building is used by the public.
Oh, I know it is, and it's used by us too. I mean, our whole.
And I don't know, maybe updating on that first page is probably the, maybe the wrong, as you stated, that is maybe meeting, meeting operational needs of this building, because we're really not going to be doing a lot of updating to this area, there are going to be changes. We can't, we can't fund with this facility, the facility is rather large, it has a significant amount of HVAC needs.
Yeah.
And because of that, we don't need all this square footage, so part of this would be to reduce the square footage on this campus.
And maybe that information needs to be in there, I don't know. And maybe not, I'm just, I, it just, it was something that jumped out at me, that I could see people saying, well, what are they doing? You know, what did they not save East for? Nobody's using it. Even though we know people are using it, but the community doesn't necessarily understand that, so. And maybe they do, maybe I'm not.
And that will, and that's hard, you're limited to so many words in a survey, so.
Right.
To be honest with you, we want to maintain this facility for Central Office, Central Oaks, possibly some other educational issues, so we fully utilize the current configuration of Lincoln, as well as the Central Office building. But there are other areas of this campus that we no longer need to use, and we want to try to optimize this facility to reduce the size of the square footage on this facility, but yet update it approximately. If we were going to say, let's say we wanted to abandon this facility and build a new Central Office, it would be cost more than what we would be looking at on this existing facility. And I hear that maybe, I also get connections about, what are you going to do with that building?
Yeah.
And I still think there's a strong connection, it's a big solid building, it needs some tough pointing. But I think the community would prefer to keep the original Lincoln, the East Building, versus demolishing what they're carrying about.
Yeah.
But that's my, that's my guess, and that's why we're asking what that looks like. And you're the board, you can tell me if you're different than that, but I think there's a connection to maintain this building, if we can operationally use it. There's no doubt as we go through this capital or operational, that we'll, we're going to attempt to reduce our footprint and the number of buildings we do have in the district, as the student enrollment has declined.
Is there a starting, I know it's a little bit out, we have that listening session on the 6th, is that?
Yep, right now, we tentatively have it planned for 6:00 PM on November 6th.
Will that information be included in the survey?
Good point, it's not in the survey, yep. And that survey, that meeting will be in the comments at LHS. The PAC is unavailable. We believe it will be.
Have to work, I mean, that a lot of people.
Yeah, we can, T500, we can still.
It's a lot in this survey, there's a lot of information. I hope people will, I worry that people aren't going to participate just because of the length and the depth. I like the fact that we're giving them all the information. I, I'm like this, because I'm, 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 I think we need to inform people, and this does that. On the other hand, are people just going to say, oh, they want more money, and not read it? And that concerns me, I just, I'm just, I'm not arguing against it or anything, I'm just saying that's concerning.
And over the next three weeks, there will be a lot of social media contacts, as well as podcasts, obviously, through WFHR, as well as on our website, to attempt everyone, always open for questions.
Thank you.
Call my office, 715-424-6701.
And hopefully, we can also do our part as.
Well, exactly, of course.
And explaining, and reaching out, and encouraging people that while it is a lengthy survey, it is incredibly important to, you know, fill any surveys that come from the district, as they really do guide our decisions, so.
Can you say the email and the mail times again?
So we anticipate the email going October 30th, and then the survey to drop right after that. Depends how quick we get it to the printer this week, and we're waiting on that state aid that comes out on the 15th. So we can input that data on that page, two or three that had the highlights. We do want to make sure that is accurate, and as soon as that's accurate, we can get it off to the printer. A reminder, it's all, everything on the survey does not come to us, it goes to the company. No one knows who filled, no one from the district knows who filled it out.
That's nice, yeah.
We use a third party to handle all of that, and they do all the data tallying, so no one needs to have to believe that I know who filled out what part of the survey.
Okay, I, I think on, at least, like, I'm on page, on our board package, it's page nine. You know, when you're talking about the perception of East.
Yep.
I think, I see what you mean, like, you know, we're talking about facility challenges. We know we have a lot of them.
Yep.
In that kind of second paragraph there, we're really, like, that's what we're talking about.
That's what we're talking about, yep.
And I think, I see what you mean, where it's like, well, someone's not going to read all of it, they're really going to grab their attention, it's going to be those first couple paragraphs. So maybe instead of highlighting that that's.
Yeah, Woodside is a significant need for us.
Maybe that would be a better highlight here.
Yep.
I mean, I very much think we still talk about.
Yep.
This is included in there, but if I'm a fatigued reader, who's going to stop after, like, this is way too much for me to read.
I'd put Woodside there and move that down to where Woodside is.
Yep.
Yeah, I think highlighting some of where students are actually in. Because I do see that, like.
Yep.
To continue operating, I think if I didn't know, I'd be like, how am I going to mean keep operating? There's no students there ever, maybe I don't know about Central Oaks or all the things, so.
Okay. They do.
And one other suggestion, but I don't know if you can have room, but it just, a quick definition, and you embed the definition throughout. Just a quick definition of what an operating referendum is, and what a facility referendum, or a capital referendum is. I mean, that, we know that, it's obvious, but not, it's not going to be obvious to everybody, and there's going to be a lot of people saying, well, what's the difference we're here talking about? And I know they've been running, people have voted on them, but just if there's room, just right at the outset, we're talking operating.
And kind of on the front, we kind of mentioned lack of funding, which is operating, and aging facilities, which is capital, maybe we can put that term within those two. There's a certain number of words that you have in the survey to make sure someone uses it, and that's where we're getting close to.
But if it could just be more obvious, just, it could just, you know, I don't know, somewhere or somehow.
Yep. Now, let's lay it out, number one and number two, then we follow that path, but we don't mention operating in number one, and we don't mention capital in number two.
Right.
So that makes sense, yeah. Any other feedback? There's no action needed, because this was for us to...
Just note that the Woodside building, that's the same gym I was there. And St. Patrick's, here is actually expanded.
Somehow we could include that, I would say, should we put that in there?
And I graduated from the last class in this building, so that gives you the...
This was like this when John Bembel went to school.
And one of the things that we, if you look at most of our elementary buildings, they're relatively older buildings.
Yeah.
And when those buildings were built, they were not the special education needs in many of those buildings that there are now. It has a special education and 504 plans, and so the modifications we've attempted to do has taken away classroom space. And so when we talk about Woodside, and we also talk about Think, and we look at those areas, in addition, if we look at full-day 4K programming, which I think would be a huge asset in our community. Those are really what's driving some of that, in addition to that aging infrastructure. The full-day 4K conversation, I think, was a really important part of this operating referendum, because there are multiple people, there was a survey done with our current 4K families, and almost 80% said, yes, they would have enrolled in 4K, or would have strongly considered it. And if we would pursue full-day 4K, it's not that we would abandon half-day, we really want to provide that choice for families. I have a feeling that most of our families, based upon that survey, would choose full-day, but we would still provide a half-day option for those families that would want to do that. Anything else from the survey? I tried to highlight all those points. We're excited to get this out. I encourage everyone who's viewing this video to complete the survey. If you had a back and any point or questions on it, please reach out. We want our citizens to be knowledgeable of the survey, and to be aware to make that knowledgeable decision. Okay?
All right, our next item is update discussion on the 26, 27 school year calendar and reviewing options.
So based upon feedback from last week's ed services, there's no action item tonight, but I just would want to provide with you calendar option A and option B, which are at your table tonight as well. Option A is the calendar that would be a September 1st start date. This calendar is different than what's currently approved, because there's a few changes in it that I want to point out to you along the way. So there's PD day in October, there's a, so students that have off that first Friday, in addition, all staff and students that have the last Friday off, which will be October 30th, which is autumn break, which has been a request. This year, we gave staff credit of a half a PD day for completing all their in-service paperwork, the HR paperwork, the technology paperwork. So you will notice on this calendar, on the 25th of November, staff would get credit for that half day and that day, and then it would be a half-day record-keeping day. So they technically would not come in the building that day, but would be credited that grades are due, et cetera. Because of how we changed that, winter break would begin on the 23rd, there'd be professional development on the 18th. Once again, it would be PD record-keeping day on March 5th. School year would end on Friday, June 4th. So school would start September 1st, would end after Memorial Day on June 4th. This is not the calendar that's currently approved, but if we did a September 1st start date, this would be the calendar we would bring for approval.
Spring break, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, spring break, this moved on here to the middle of March, not the week of Good Friday. That's part of that collaboration with the parochial schools that we're trying to do. That spring break, we know matches up with UWC this 20th spring break.
There's still, you know, school on the 28th with that too, right? Even though...
On the 26th, for Good Fri...
Or 26th, yeah.
Yes, yes. The option B is the calendar with the August 24th start date. You will notice that the Friday before Labor Day is not off, or on the September 1st start date, we have school that Friday before Labor Day. We would give staff credit for a half day of their PD that I talked about, and then they'd have a half a PD day, but students would be off on that day. We will be in school on October 2nd. October 30th is an off day, as it is in both calendars. Of the 25th, the Wednesday before November would entirely be off in this calendar. December would be 23rd, first, so winter break would not be different. You'll notice in February, PD record-keeping, and then a PD day in March. And then in this calendar, we are done before Memorial Day, May 28th. So this would be an August 24th start, so it'll start before Labor Day, but end before Memorial Day.
Are you going to put the start and end days, like option 1, 3, 4?
So this is, there is a...
This could be a little confusing.
Yep, so what is planned to go out, there's a two-paragraph introductory Google form that would be going to all parents, excuse me, Skyward form, that will be going to all parents, so parents can only vote once, based upon what's in Skyward. There's a two-paragraph introduction, option A is listed, option B is listed, modified PDF of Roxy's presentation from last week. In addition, I want to do a short video with that same presentation from last week, so it'll be four things attached to the survey. Video explaining the PowerPoint, no one wanted to watch it, they could just see the PowerPoint, and then option A and option D, with a deadline date to complete the survey by October 24th. The whole business of the survey will be out tomorrow. I haven't made the video yet, because I wanted to make sure there were no modifications in this calendar, or suggestions by the board tonight, on our calendars, so I'm not starting the video yet.
And there'll be an actual PDF of the calendars, so you will see option A, but just like you had in front of you, and you'll see option B, just like you had in front of you.
Do you think it would benefit us to list when graduation would be in either model, or do we think so?
Okay. Yeah, so an option A, graduation would be on Saturday, the 29th. Yep, and 11, I think we do that at 11:00 AM, this is Memorial Day weekend. And then, option B, graduation would be on Sunday, May 23rd at 1:00 PM. Graduation is the week before the last day of school. Memorial Day weekend, graduation is on Saturday, so families can still have a little bit more extended weekend, and we do it a little earlier, and then we're simply create that for families.
I think that might be up.
And it'll be a very balanced presentation of both options, with some kinds of quotes.
Yep, it's very similar to Roxy's presentation, and the two paragraphs explain the rationale to start earlier, and then the second paragraph explains a conflict with Central Wisconsin Fair.
Can there be a section in there with, for, so whatever option you choose, so what I'm kind of just gathering at here is, you know, if somebody clicks yes, just say, oh, we're going to be out of school early, well, then there's parents that are involved in the fair, they're just like, yes, I really need this, and then there's other people that are just like, yeah, that's cool. Can there be like a thing, a word in there to kind of explain why you vote each way, just very briefly, just so we can have, is there, can you do that, or no?
Do we have a comment?
No comments, I can talk, yeah.
I have no idea if we can add a comment in how, through Skyward, because Phil's, I did not request that of Phil, I can ask Phil, I can put, if it's doable in Skyward, I don't know if it is or not, but I can ask Phil if it is.
I think the presentation, it's in Roxy's presentation.
No, but he's saying the people that vote, can they write comments why they voted, the way that they did?
I don't know what that's going to do for us.
I just, I just, I guess I would like to just know why they voted the way they did, I guess, kind of, so.
I'd never answer that question, so.
They don't, they don't, but...
Do we want, like, an ill preference? I mean, if we're only here for the other week, I mean, if I'm filling out a survey, and I don't really care either way, I mean, I'm probably either of them not going to answer the survey, or I'm just going to pick one, or guess, or I don't, I don't know what I'm going to do if I don't. So I don't, I don't know if we would be...
That I don't think there'd be any issue with, I think, just...
Like an option C, an option C that says, I have no preference.
I don't know what a comment section, but I can...
Okay, and maybe that, I mean, I don't know, maybe that would give a little bit, it doesn't give you a comment, but it would tell you, it would tell us maybe how many of our families are a little inclined?
I mean, it basically states, and I can read it, "The Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools is exploring a potential change to school calendar for 2026, 27 school year, and we need your input. While state law typically requires schools to begin after September 1st, our district can request permission to start earlier. We are considering proposal to begin the school year on Monday, August 24, 2026. This adjustment would save the district in transportation costs of parochial privacy students, allow school year to end formally. We can provide students with more instructional time before the state required forward ACT exams, as well as advanced placement exams, and better align with the start of fall sports and athletics facilities. We understand that this changes both benefits and drawbacks for families and staff, and earlier start date creates conflicts with events such as the 2026 Central Wisconsin State Fair, and we recognize the challenges posed by possible warm weather in our buildings without air conditioning. To help you make an informed choice, we could attach a video presentation and a PDF of a traditional and proposed early start calendar. Option A is a Tuesday, September 1st start date, while option B is a Monday, August 24th start date. Please review this information before sharing your valuable feedback. The survey will close on Friday, October 24th."
I like that the dates are connected right in the option A.
Yeah, and I'll probably put an end date on that as well, based upon your feedback, of putting that in there. Option A is a September 1st start date with an end date of, option B is the start date of this with an end date of.
I mean, I like attaching the calendar, but I also like, just, this is what it is, so thank you.
All right. So that we hope to get out tomorrow, maybe with possibly these modifications, it might be Wednesday morning, but we hope to get that out. In addition, at your table tonight was the public comment, so please take a read to that if you did not see that at your table tonight. Thank you.
Our next new business item is possible action to approve the certification, certification of acceptance of donation of real estate in Stevens Point, Wisconsin by CISA 5.
So as you're well aware, CISA 5 was renting our space here, but it is due to a change of facilities in Wapaka. We're looking at a joint program between Wapaka Porridge and Wood County. They're currently leasing some space in the Stevens Point School District, but have a donation of property to run what would have been Wood County Alternative School, I don't know what the new name is right now, in Stevens Point, so they need action of all the boards within CISA 5 to accept that donation of property. Kathy serves on the board for CISA 5, I don't know if you have anything else you want to add on that, Kathy?
No, except it's a wonderful opportunity. The space would be very, very good for this purpose, at least according to Jeremy Bill, who's the director of CISA 5. And they're excited about the opportunity, and we'll obviously have to do some renovations and things to the building, but it would be a positive thing for the district. Of course, it's nice to have it here, but this is going to make sure more kids are servicing this place.
And much like what we're looking at, of looking at our operational, they're looking at how they can be more efficient in their operations by having the backend Wood County programs together, so. Initially, I think this was going to be a purchase, but now it's a donation due to some other things that the company...
Yeah, we were looking at it, or CISA 5 was looking at it as a purchase, but the price was just out of the ballpark. And then after talking to the people who owned the building, they came back and said, well, we'll go make this cheap, and it was a call, so it's a great opportunity.
So we would need a motion to accept the donation of real estate, and then we have that moving forward with some signatures later on tonight, to CISA 5.
I would make a motion to approve the certification of acceptance of donation of real estate in Stevens Point, Wisconsin by CISA 5. I have a motion to approve the certification of acceptance of donation of real estate in Stevens Point, Wisconsin by CISA 5. Chris, can we have roll call?
Ms. Seven Saints?
Yes.
Ms. St. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Benbow?
Yes.
Mr. Eda?
Yes.
All right, the motion is approved. Anything else on that?
No.
Moving on, our next item is discussion and possible action to select a Friend of Education Award recipient. I know in the update you had talked about now.
Yep, so it's my recommendation, after consulting with Mr. Cranes, to, Friend of Education for the Judy Goss Memorial Literacy Fund. That fund donates books to a variety of our elementary classrooms every year, it's been in effect since 2017. So far, they've donated over $4,700 worth of books and materials to our elementary students across the district. Just a really strong supporter of literacy in our elementary schools.
Can I just add too, I worked with Judy back in the day, she was a reading recovery and reading intervention, we called them reading Title I teachers at the time, but reading interventionists to, I think, two of our elementary schools, and she was excellent, and her family, there's, many of her children and grandchildren have gone through the district, and Bob, her husband, after she passed, was, this was really something he wanted to do, and establish this memorial. And it's, it has been very, very positive, and it's a real nice, and each of the books, it gets a sticker inside that says, donated by the Judy Goss Literacy Foundation, so. Or literacy, that's not the name of it, but something like that.
And if approved in a second, that'll be awarded in December.
We have the holiday concert, which is done on Sunday, very...
I'll make a motion to approve presenting the 2025 Friend of Education Award to Judy Goss Family and Literacy Foundation.
A motion to approve of presenting the 2025 Friend of Education Award to the Judy Goss Literacy Foundation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
I'd also like to point out that we've lost a big fan, or a big supporter of the Wisconsin Rapids District, and he's been here for many years, but Jack's been passed away this past weekend. And I don't know if there's something we can do on him, but he was a big part of this district.
He was our athletic director back in the 80s and into the 90s, I don't know at that point.
He was coaching, right?
He was coaching, but he also taught full-time. So things have changed. At that time, our AD, who, when our sporting programs were even bigger than they are now, basically kept everything going in our athletics in the district, without any time off. He taught five classes a day, and then he was the 80, and that man worked, I can't believe how hard he worked.
And one of the coolest things is just the amount of how people stay connected to the district. So when I was first hired, Jack was one of the first people that welcomed me when I was high school principal, and that connection, and he continued to work events, continued to work state gymnastics, probably the next decade after, so up until just a few years ago, always involved in what we're doing.
Final new business item, discussion and possible action on the WRPS Employee Health Insurance Plan Manual, including potential benefit changes and continued contributions to employee health savings accounts.
So Jen Cordy is here from M3. Jen's been here for our last few meetings, and we just have a brief presentation, which is at your tables, in front of you, although there's been a slight modification or two in what we'll be showing you tonight on the screen.
Not much. Well, thank you for having me back again, it's always a pleasure to work with your group. So we are now getting closer to finalizing where we're at with our health plan. Last time we were here, we showed you your medical loss ratio through August of 2025. That little number on the very bottom there, very bottom right-hand corner, is 119%, if you remember last month, we grabbed 1.18, so we went 1% the wrong direction, going with another month of data. This is data through July, but paid through September, because there is a claims leg. And our year-to-date number for the last 12 months is at 120%, so really no real change in how our plan has been performing. The numbers are what the numbers are, we're just bringing these claims that like to keep you updated on what that looks like. So if, as you remember, when we were here last time, our Cyrus Health Plan Partner, our renewal, calculated at a 37.7, we did have what we call a not-to-exceed rate for 2026 of 9.5% on signature. It was uncapped on Freedom. So Freedom could have whatever it wanted for a rate increase, but they only delivered at 14.5% because we had so much shift of employees from that Freedom Plan last year over to Signature. It was a reminder for you, for the two different networks. Signature is basically everybody but Marshfield. So if Aspiris, you have your health, Mayo and Rochester, not Mayo and Eau Claire. It gives you all of the strong independence. The difference between Signature and Freedom is Freedom gives you Marshall Clinic in network benefits. It is not a network on that Signature plan. So our renewal strategy, we tried to get an NTP for 2027. It did not come into play because of how we're performing with our medical loss ratio. We are in the midst of implementing direct primary care right now with Inovia. So it's mid-October, and we've already got 15 patients seen since the 1st of October. And we've actually had 20 appointments scheduled yet to be seen. So they have not been seen, so we've seen updates. We've actually had one patient seen in the Menominee Clinic, so a college student going up to WStout was seen. And then we saw somebody over in the Ashkosh Clinic. So we are giving the message out for people to use the clinic. That's really exciting. And it was determined that retirees, if they would like to have the Inovia coverage, they can. They just have to elect to enroll, and one retired has elected to enroll in coverage so far. That announcement just went out, so they have time to enroll on that. You are all invited to our open house that will be at Inovia on November 11th from 3 to 7. Come take a look at the clinic. I was told that the exam, the issues rule is coming this week, so they are moving right along on East Street. So one of the proposed changes that is up in front of you today is the HSA contribution. And really, it is to drive clinic utilization. And remember, if you remember from last year, we changed the HSA contribution into two pieces. We used to always contribute into the HSA account as of January 1st. So it's if you're retired or left the district at the end of the school year, that contribution went with them. So we changed that in 2025 to half made in January, half made in September. Our proposed change is that the September contribution is contingent on employee plus spouse using that clinic between now and July 31st is the motion that is on the table. We want to incent them to use that. So if they use the clinic one time in person, they will get their full September contribution. If they're enrolled as employee plus spouse or family on the plan, we are asking that spouse to go, and their contribution will be at $500. Do you have people that are enrolled as family, but there's no spouse on the plan, and they have multiple children on the plan or whatnot? Their entire contribution will base on that employee use contribution.
Yep, I just want to hit on that. So the intent is to have somebody walk in the door, because if there's something new, there can be some apprehension. How are we gonna use that? What does it look like? We want to have our employees utilize that facility. That HSA payment, we could've said, you know, we're gonna use that entire HSA payment to attempt to pay for the clinic. We chose not to do that. That HSA payment obviously is always up in the air. We look at our budgetary and our health impacts. When it was brought in, it was stated we didn't know how long that HSA benefit would stay there. So it's really between now and July 31st, we're asking them to walk in the door during that 10-month time period.
We did feel there is enough time to get them in between now and January 1st, especially with the clinic not opening in Rapids till November 3rd. So therefore, that's why we want this September contribution. Remember, the use of the clinic is no copay. So anybody that goes to an Inovia clinic, there is no charge to that employee. There is no monthly membership fee. It's a phenomenal benefit that they're able to use and have that enhanced direct primary care benefit. So that is one of the items on the table. So the next item on the table is we do have two plan options on the screen in front of you. You have our current renewal that we have here at the 9.5% for the first column. I'm gonna have to put my glasses on. I gotta be able to hold firm memory from the top of my head. Sorry about that, guys. Option number five is our recommendation to the board. This plan design, what is up in front of you is for our Signature, which is the majority of our population. We have 138 employee-only's on this plan in 417 families. The items in yellow is what's changing from current. So please note, we are changing the maximum out-of-pocket from $2,000 to $2,500 on a single plan, and $4,000 from a family plan to $5,000 on that maximum out-of-pocket. What goes towards that maximum out-of-pocket is co-pays. And it's co-pays for urgent care and emergency room. So the urgent care co-pay is $75 after deductible, and emergency room is $250 after deductible. So essentially, the plan works identical to what it does today. But once you meet your deductible, you're then gonna switch over to medical co-pays for an additional $500 on single or $1,000 on family. That brings our rate increase down to an 8.63% from that 9.5. We did look at going to what we call Option 9. Option 9 is the same concept of that $75 co-pay on urgent and $250 on emergent, but it's raising that deductible for $1,000 for single, and it's $2,000 for family. And there wasn't enough movement between that Option 6, Option 5, and Option 9. It only saved like another half percent to go to put on that risk. And so we felt the better value was with that Option 5 for Signature. So that is the recommendation that's on the proposal for you guys tonight for Signature. Behind that is Freedom. Freedom has a higher deductible. We switched this years ago to incent our employees. They have more choice, they have Marshfield. So they have a higher deductible on our Freedom Plan. It is a $3,000 single, $6,000 family. They have the exact same concept on Option 6. We're gonna raise that maximum out-of-pocket from $3,000 to $3,500 for single, and $6,000 to $7,000 on that family. They would still have the same urgent care and emergency room co-pays. It just goes towards that after deductible is met for those family members. That takes their 14.5% down to a 13.72. Again, there was not enough juice for the squeeze of the last option that was there. Does that make sense for those plan options that you see there? We thought that this aligned with our utilization of our clinic. We have the clinic to use, they have email, they have FaceTime, they have after-hour services. So it is 24/7. We're still gonna have emergent care. We're gonna need emergency room after hours and during regular hours because there's going to be significant emergency things that happen, like heart attacks that Inovia can't deal with. They're still gonna go there, but you still have a cap of what that co-pay looks like. Encourages our members to use that Inovia clinic that we're caring for a little bit more of a stick if they decide not to use it versus the carrot that the clinic has in the co-pay.
So Inovia has Saturday and Sunday hours or just?
They will not have Saturday and Sunday hours, but they are available on-call. So you can call their phone number, and they have an on-call provider that will return a phone call. They have the ability to do emails and like FaceTime video chats with members. We have an employer that uses the clinic out of the narrow. And one of our employees' sons was, had access to the clinic, had strep throat over the 4th of July up in Menakla. Was able to call it in, got the antibiotic, didn't go into the emergency room or urgent care on the holiday weekend. So they will have access. It just is leaving a message, giving a call back because they share rotation between the clinics. Good question. So that is the Signature and the Freedom Plan. This has not changed since the last time that we got together. So this is showing the employer contribution on the current plan design. So that means not implementing any co-pays. This is looking at where we projected our 2025 spend to be at $14,027,019. That was prior to us getting the shift from Signature, or from Freedom over to Signature. Our final actual spend based on moment numbers not changing would be about $12.3 million. Again, those savings were saved there. So if you take the renewal, the 9.5% on Signature and 14.5% on Freedom, we're looking at a net increase of 7.89% for the district. Remember that employee and employer contributions on Signature stay at the 85.15% split, and that the Freedom family, they are frozen at last year's contribution for family and Signature. If we make the change to the co-pay option, that takes that 7.89% down to a 7.17. This is a really good renewal with how we're performing for this year. The concern comes into 2027 when we don't have an NTP. Average increases that we're seeing across the state right now for 1-1 are over 13% coming out of the, for decent performing groups. That's an average of what we're seeing with N3 right now. So it is a very tight renewal cycle that we are seeing for January. It is not a large difference from employees. So if you look at Signature single, it's 154 versus 152 on our monthly paid employees. Signature families, 343 versus 341. 564 for Freedom single versus 554. And Freedom families at 1260 versus 1238. Our Freedom numbers are very, very low of what we have left. I can tell you what those are momentarily. Our Freedom numbers, we have 18 people that are singles and 15 families that chose to stay on the Freedom Plan this past year. We anticipate that we'll have more of them shift over depending on their Marshall applying.
So the recommendation is that we cap what the district contributes to the Freedom Plan on what we paid for this current year, and the rate increase with all of our employees for that additional amount. That dollar figures on the Freedom Plan, what the district is contributing is still slightly more than what the district contributes on the Signature Plan.
So if you wanna see what that looks like, the Freedom single cost for every employee that's on the Freedom single today is $10,635. The employee, or sorry, so, and the Signature single would go to $10,356. There's approximately about $300 more going to the Freedom single individuals. Freedom family's at $23,794 versus the Signature family is at the $23,172. So roughly $600 more goes to those Freedom family members to have that plan option. So the last thing that we have to discuss for proposed changes is spousal surcharge. And we started talking about that last time. As you recall, spousal surcharge only applies to spouses that have other employer coverage available to them. So anybody that does not have employer-sponsored coverage, this would not apply to that, does not apply to government plans like VA coverage, Medicare, Vagicare, or Marketplaces. Only other employer-sponsored coverage. If the spouse of an employee takes their employer's coverage and stays on the school district's plan, there is no spousal surcharge because their plan then becomes primary, and our plan becomes secondary. That limits the school district's exposure to whatever that other plan's maximum out-of-pocket is, so that we're not on hook for those claims. If the spouse declines their employer's coverage and chooses to be on the Council of Public School coverage, then the spousal surcharge would apply. And it would be $125. In the motion tonight, it's $1,500 per year because we have some employees that get paid monthly or over nine months. The intent today is $1,500 per year. So there is a savings to the districts because of the retainer's spousal surcharge. The real savings really comes in for shifting that cost over to employer plans that are there, and it has the potential to create waivers. I will say, for school districts in our market, this is not a popular concept in North Central Wisconsin. On the eastern side of the state, the school districts is very popular. It's very popular with manufacturing. The public sector has been slow to adopt, but it's being evaluated more and more. So one of the things that we've discussed on our committee meetings is, as being an employer of choice, what this looks like, what this does for retention. But we've gotta do something to start some shift with our plan as well. So it is a balance between continuing retention, spousal surcharge, and all that that's there.
How would that be noted? I mean, how would this be?
Yeah, so you would have an affidavit if you have a spouse on the plan, that you would either have them take to their employer that says, I don't have, I'm not eligible for employer coverage. So there's an affidavit that go out. So it will cause administrative work for Candy and Brian's team for that enrollment.
One of the things that's guided us down is looking at our next renewal, we'll possibly be looking at an employee-plus-child option. Employee, employee-plus-childen option, and employee-plus-spouse option, in addition to the family option. We started exploring that, but didn't feel like this part. We're ready to move that whole direction at this point, which we'll have further discussion with the employees as time goes on.
Our rates today are what we consider two tiers. So we're either looking at a three-tier or a four-tier, where we can break it over to tiers. But one of the reasons that we didn't go right away to that is because the family takes the big shift. Employee rate goes down. Everybody wins with the family. So implementing the spousal surcharge and changing the rate tiers, the family seem to really compound effect on those family members that are enrolled that way that need that coverage, so.
So we chose not to pursue that in this, in this look. Obviously, as Jen is stating, you know, healthcare is, you know, people in businesses that have a much less rate than we do are seeing increases at 13% to 15%. None of us like this, none of us. We've been eyeing over this, over this the entire time. And unfortunately, there needs to be some rate modifications based upon our budgetary situation where we are as a district as well.
So next up, I just put the items that were up for discussion that you have in front of you. Kathy, to answer any questions that you guys have.
One of the things I hope we can do differently next year when we go through this process is that there is an insurance committee where these things are being discussed. So that at least for educating teachers, maybe there's nothing we can do about it, nothing they can do about it. But so there's some key teacher leaders who understand this, so that they can be communicating to, you know, the other teachers why we have to do this. Because like you said, none of this is popular, it's very, very difficult for them. And I guess I'm kind of frustrated that we don't do that. And again, it's not like in the old days when the insurance committee could make these recommendations, and, you know, the teachers have that input. But at least if there's some sort of a committee that we're working with, where they're gaining an understanding with the committee and other teachers, I think that helps us and makes it more valuable.
And we have, not that it's not been a committee, but our communication is central often, that healthcare trying to communicate as much as possible.
Right, no, I understand it.
Yep.
I understand that, but I do think that where there's, a lot of times, this is, just goes over people's head, and all they see is that their bills are going up because they're busy and they're living their lives. And it's just frustrating, and that understanding of the whole issue of usage and those percentages is lost. And the other thing that makes me angry, but there's nothing, absolutely nothing we can do about it is, you know, we're getting penalized because our usage is so high. Not directly penalized, but that, you know, nobody wants to insure us at a rate because our usage is so high. But at the same time, we continue to support Aspiris by buying into this plan and going there and having all our teachers going there and they're making tons of money that way, yet our insurance continues to go up, and it's just frustrating. I know, I know, I just, I just.
And there's a lot of unknowns, and I mean, we're kind of getting this out there now, but with ACA and premium increases and lack of coverage elsewhere. There could be a lot more passed on from athletics to private insurances that would be outside of our control, but we're gonna see that impact when we are here in this situation in July and August.
Yeah.
And speaking to the rationale of the spouse having to use the clinic as well with employee contribution, I'm sure that ties into the very same piece. I'm sure that ties into the very same piece.
Yeah, because, because spouses drive, they drive claims typically spouses. They typically cost twenty percent more than an active employee on the plan. Um, so wanting to eventually at some point get to self-funded, you can't get to self-funded with a hundred and twenty percent loss ratio. But basically it'd be twenty percent plus more out to go with, uh, to go with self-funding at this point in time. But that, that is the, the concept behind having a spouse use the clinic is that we want them to get in the door, get that better care, early diagnosis, and if they're not going to have that value, then you have that spousal surcharge if they have access to them, because that would have savings on us as well if they don't use the clinic. That's not a membership, because I'd be paying a per participant per month fee to Anovia on that clinic.
But the advantage of the clinic is it's not in competition with everybody in the city that goes to Inspireus to, to make a one o'clock appointment and you'll go get your one o'clock appointment as opposed to going there at one o'clock and he may be sitting there twelve, two o'clock before you even seen him.
Yep.
And it's, it's, there's so many positives, I would love that, you know, if we had those options, if our kids are growing up and all that type of thing. And we're, my wife is on school insurance through, through the CUSA and all of that. It's the same difference. I mean, every school district's facing the same thing, but this is a tremendous opportunity for our employees to be seen and not to get charged second office visit because you went from your covered, you nearly replied to getting a shot of which then they charge you a second office visit. Or a third office visit if you do something else. It's like, and, and it's just, it's going to be an advantage and it will, should and will probably drive down our usage rate on that end of it.
The thing is, is it, will it be, what's the timing of that, right? So we're mid-October, we're looking at September numbers that can be.
In the future, we're not saying now.
Yep, yep, in the future. My goal is that we see some impact in the first six months numbers to help us drive down for our renewal because that's when we start calculating our renewal is in July, so.
No, I think the idea is brilliant. To the people, the teachers that I have talked to who aren't understanding it and are aware of it, really like it. There's still a lot out there, I shouldn't say, oh, I accidentally talked to that name, but it's on my calendar that they're just, you know, and that's just, but as people use it more, that we're just going to get.
So I had an employee share with me that scheduled appointment, obviously the Rapids office isn't open. Um, scheduled an hour appointment, their introductory appointment. The practitioner took an hour and a half and literally walked out at about the eighty-nine minute mark. So it felt really positive about the environment. Obviously, it's at a different, than the clinic that we're going to have here in town. But my understanding is that care is going to be anywhere if it's West End or Oshkosh or in the town.
Can we talk about the, um, a little bit more about the fifty percent deposit contingent? Honestly, I'm uncomfortable with that and I don't know if this is all going to be in one big motion, if that can be pulled out, to be a separate vote. Uh, and now that I'm not supporting Anovia, I am, I think it's brilliant. I think it's a great idea, but I'm, I'm not comfortable, but it's just me personally, I'm not comfortable with that. And I don't want to vote no for the whole thing, but that piece is probably.
We can, we can have two separate motions.
Yeah, I think we should, yeah.
I'm sorry to create my. I tend to do that this side of the table. Yes.
I was going to mention that.
And I, I, I will just state to that, that, that we feel that we need to get everybody to go, go on the door as much as we can and that's one of the ways to do that.
I understand where you're coming from, I'm just troubled by it.
Yep.
And, and if you want to change utilization, it takes change. And, you know, and it's an option to earn that contribution back. So change takes change and we've got to change how our members are engaging in our health plan today. Because otherwise we'll never get out of the hundred and ten to hundred and twenty percent loss ratios.
Maybe that was discussed at the Anovia group, when they presented, when there was a decent number of staff. I think every, I'm not going to say this, but right, every category was represented, every position, so employee, thank you. Um, so.
I think it's a concern of trying to get your spouse to go.
Yeah.
In that aspect. But yet, as, as Jen stated, that's about twenty percent above than, than an employee in the cost overall. So, but we can have two separate motions, yes.
I do appreciate that the timeline has been extended. I think that was, I think that was a concern at the, the presentation was that we were kind of trying to do it by the end of the year. I think there were some concerns, um, especially as a new clinic is open and then everyone's trying to get in right away. So I appreciate that that's been extended through, was it July?
July thirty-first for the September payment.
So that's ample summertime for, you know, our staff members. Also, I mean, maybe months of convincing your spouse to get in there and make the appointment of you're going in two months. So I appreciate that that, that was changed.
Was the listening session all attended?
With the Anovia?
Yeah.
Yeah, but there was a significant amount of people in the P A C that day. And then for those that weren't able to attend, M three made an additional, we didn't send that recording out. There was an additional recording out based upon the questions received that night, which was sent to all staff.
And we also created a F A Q based on the, most of the questions that were asked that applied to most people. There were some questions that are very specific about their medication, we let those go. So it's just the very wide population questions that we, we added to that.
Was there any discussion of ways to incentivize people to go versus penalizing?
This is the incentive, I mean, I think it really.
It's that hard part, because we already do provide the HSA. This HSA that we provide is larger than most of our neighboring districts. Um, they, they use that as a, they use a smaller dollar figure to incentivize. So initially, when the survey went out, when we held a meeting in here, we used that word incentivize. And then the feedback was, well, you really are penalizing by not giving it to me. So we, I said, yeah, incentivizing is not really the word, but yet it's kind of that, we could have just said, my recommendation tonight could have just been to, to just pull the HSA and that would cover the Anovia thing. Chose not to do that. So, yeah, it's incentivizing, but yet it's not because it's already something that you think you have received in the past. So incentivize is really not a correct word.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's not the best description of what's happening. Um, and part of it is the clinic's free, it's no, it's no cost to that employee.
It's amazing, yeah.
And, and it's not free to the district as from a budget. It's a heavy investment from, from the district that we want to utilize. And so besides having no co-pays to go towards, to have a barrier to get in, the HSA contribution is conditional and one of those things we continue to evaluate every year. So this was, this was a tough give and take. And Brian, I think, really warned us not to use the word incentivize when it came to discussing the HSA contribution strategy.
All right, I might, um, make a motion to approve proposed modifications to the District Employee Health Insurance Plan as proposed effective January one, twenty twenty-six, which includes maintaining Signature Plan benefits as with employees paying fifteen percent of premiums and the district paying eighty-five percent of premiums. Changing the Freedom Plan, we have the same premium dollar amount that the district paid in twenty twenty-five. Family of twenty-three thousand seven ninety-four per year, single of ten thousand six thirty-five per year, with the employee paying, paying the remaining difference. Adding two hundred and fifty-dollar emergency room and seventy-five-dollar urgent care per visit co-pays to Signature and Freedom Plans. If these services are not used, the deductible will remain the same. If used, co-pays will increase the deductible up to a potential of five hundred single and a thousand family maximum. Signature maximum out of pocket, twenty-five hundred single, five thousand family. Freedom maximum out of pocket, thirty-five hundred single, seven thousand family. Um, and then adding a spousal surcharge of fifteen hundred dollars per year for spouse covered under the district plan that have employer-sponsored coverage available to them.
And a motion to approve, um, proposed modifications to the District Employee Health Insurance Plan as proposed effective January one, twenty twenty-six, which includes maintaining Signature Plan benefits as is with employees paying fifteen percent of premiums and the district paying eighty-five percent of premiums. Changing the Freedom Plan to have the same premium dollar amount as the district paid in twenty twenty-five. Amounts, family twenty-three thousand seven hundred ninety-four per year, single ten thousand six hundred and thirty-five per year, with the employee paying the remaining difference. Adding two hundred and fifty-dollar emergency rooms, seventy-five-dollar urgent care per visit co-pays to Signature and Freedom Plans. If these services are not used, the deductible will remain the same. If used, co-pays will increase the deductible up to a potential increase of five hundred dollars single and one thousand dollar family maximum. Adding a spousal surcharge of fifteen hundred per year for a spouse covered under the district plan that have employer-sponsored coverage available to them. Chris, could we have a roll call, please?
Could we discuss the most motion still? Is that one?
Okay, I meant the second line of the fourth bullet to be taken out, not the first line.
We didn't say any more fourth bullet.
Yeah, we kept that whole bullet out.
The whole bullet's out.
We'll do that.
Do a second motion.
Separate line.
Okay.
And then read that one.
All right.
So then this, this is for bullets one, two, three, and five. Chris, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Ms. St. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Deventon?
Yes.
Mr. Enda?
Yes.
Mr. Benbow?
Yes.
Now.
The motion is approved. I don't know if there's any more discussion on the, on the HSA piece. We're ready to go. Proceed.
I'd make a motion, maintaining the health savings account deposit among a three thousand per, for a family plan and fifteen hundred for a single plan to be deposited in a split amount of fifty percent deposit in January. The fifty percent deposit in September is contingent upon both the employee and their spouse, if applicable. Completing a physical visit to Anovia Health no later than July thirty-one, twenty twenty-six.
And a motion to approve the following proposed modifications to the District Employee Health Insurance Plan as proposed effective January one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-six, excuse me, which includes maintaining the HSA deposit amount at three thousand for a family plan and fifteen hundred for a single plan to be deposited in a split amount with fifty percent deposited in January. The fifty percent deposit in September is contingent upon both the employee and their spouse, completing a physical clinic visit to Anovia Health no later than July thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Chris, could we have a roll call?
Can we discuss that?
Mm-hmm.
I, and I don't know if I need to make a, a motion for an amendment, but I'd like the, the, that motion to be split into two.
Okay, you split it into two.
Well, we, we want to maintain the health savings account deposit, right? But I don't want to support the fifty percent deposit being contingent upon both the employee and their spouse, if applicable. You see what I'm saying? Those are two different things in my mind. Aren't they, or am I reading it wrong?
I, I say it's all part of the, the thing. I don't know how to read, how I can split it out.
Well, I, I want to maintain the health savings account, but I don't support the fifty percent deposit being contingent upon both employee and spouse completing a physical clinic visit.
Well, I guess there's, there's, you could vote on this motion. If the motion fails, there could be another motion that would come up and that would approve the fifty percent.
That really puts me in a corner because then.
The motion, John would have to modify his motion. If he doesn't want to modify his motion, that's the motion that's on the floor to vote.
I'm reading the motion as well.
I think through discussion, I know what you're asking. Kathy and I think people will know what you're saying, it's just not going to be an official vote, I'm, I'm ahead.
Can I make a motion to amend the motion?
You could.
Here goes the latter of Robert's rules.
Now, now we're talking about state convention.
Which drives John crazy, I know.
I want the latter, you just got to go back down.
Yep. So you can make the motion, yes.
Don't we have to vote on this motion first, though?
I think you vote on the amendment first.
Amendment first.
You go on the amendment first, because then if the amendment fails, then I know nobody's with me, which I don't think anybody is. But at least then I go on the record as making the motion.
Yep, so you have to, you can make your amendment.
So I would make an amendment to, I would make a motion to amend John's motion to read the introduction and then just the first sentence of the fourth bullet. Without the fifty percent deposit in September being contingent upon both employees, if that goes away. So the only part of the motion is maintaining the health savings account deposit on a three thousand for family plan and fifteen hundred for single plan to be deposited in a split amount with a fifty percent deposited in January.
Yep. Okay.
Now, is there a discussion or do?
There could be discussion on that.
Okay, then not to put you on the spot, but can I just, can you explain here, your, your ration, your stance again on why you feel that way?
Sure. Um, I just, I think the, the, Anovia clinic is going to sell itself. And people are going to use it as they learn about it. People are going to learn about it at different rates and different speeds. And I think we might be boxing a few, not a lot, but a few people in. And I just think this is one of the benefits we continue to provide our teachers and they feel really good about it. And now we start putting conditions on it and I just think that reads, does not read good law. Um, I, I worry about that. And I think our staff is informed and they're intelligent and they understand we have huge health insurance issues. I just, I don't think we need to do this to them. It just seems, I don't know, if, for me, it doesn't feel, that's all. And I, I see I'm in the minority.
Here, well, there is a problem I would have. Okay, now the spouse doesn't go, we still give them money, but now they're going to Inspireus and costing us another ten, twelve percent on that plan. Because they wouldn't go to Anovia where it's no cost. So, you know, we're not talking about the employee, we're talking about the, you know, the employee and their spouse.
Mm-hmm, no, I understand that.
So, to me, it's, it's, you gotta, somewhere you have to make an incentive. I mean, you're still going to get the money and all you gotta do is go to the clinic. Going to the clinic is an advantage because you're going to get better treatment.
And quick treatment and efficient treatment and you don't have to wait. No, I, I.
I mean, I had to wait three weeks to do a life appointment.
I hear you.
I mean.
Uh, that's why I think this is going to sell itself. I just don't feel like we need to do it.
And maybe in a, I mean, I see what you're saying in years two, years three, maybe we, we visit that. But right out of the gate, you know, I think it's, it's terrible.
I respect what you're saying, John, I do. I respect what you're saying, Troy. I just, for me, it's, I'm not comfortable with it.
So there'd be a roll call vote on this amendment, which would just be line one. So if you support just line one, you vote yes. If you don't support line one, you would vote no.
Can I, I'll just make a comment too. In the earlier meeting that was in here with, um, staff, I mean, there was a talk of incentivizing and it was presented that other, um, school districts who have moved to offering Anovia found some sort of way to tie, you know, visiting the clinic with something, whether it was an additional incentive, if they didn't have an HSA, or doing what we're proposing, tying it to that, you know, a condition. So, um, I agree that I think Anovia, once people get in there, they will see the advantage. I think, I think we have to do something to try to drive them. And I would agree with John that we're not taking it away, we're just, yes, it's another step. Um, I think I would have more concerns if we were trying to push everyone in by the end of the year. But I think giving them nine months is, I mean, I, I think most people could, could use a checkup within the next nine months, whether it's, you know, on their own or maybe with a little pushing with some monetaries. I do understand your, your point, but I, I mean, that was what, I thought that was an important piece when we discussed it with the staff, was that this isn't a new idea for us other districts to see success with doing this.
So we're voting on the amendment?
Voting on the amendment. So you'd be voting, if you vote yes, you're just voting for line one. If you want to see, go back to John's amendment, you'd be voting no. Okay. All right.
It's a bit simple.
All right.
Don't look at the symbol.
Ms. St. Myers?
No.
Ms. Deventon?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
No.
Mr. Enda? Mr. Benbow?
No.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
So now you're back to the original amendment, so any other discussion on that? I should, I'm playing a role choice, I shouldn't.
No, I'm glad you are.
All right, good. All right.
It's good you're explaining.
All right, so now we're back to the original amendment, which would be both lines there. A yes vote means you're instituting that for next year. a yes vote means you're instituting that for next year, or January 1st, sorry.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Benbo?
Yes.
Mr. Enda?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes.
Ms. Deventon?
Yes.
Ms. St. Myers?
Yes.
Can you rock the letters?
Very good. All right, looking at the calendar, I know it's a busy couple of weeks, we have this Wednesday, oh, excuse me, the Wednesday, the 22nd, is the Council for Instructional Improvement meeting at noon. On Thursday, October 23rd, at 7:00 p.m. is a special board meeting to set the tax levy. On Friday, October 24th, is the WRPS education update on WFHR Rapid Report. I'm going to jump ahead a little bit to November, busy November, post-committee meetings, on November 4th, we have the Fall Region 5 meeting for WOSB and WASA, and then I will also put a plug in for Thursday, November 6th, the referendum feedback slash listening session, I guess I'll call it that, will be on Thursday, November 6th, in the LHS Commons at 6:00, and that will, that will take us to, also there's a, actually, I feel like there's so much I'm forgetting, there's the Legislative Conference on November 8th, and then there, there's also the Anovia Clinic meeting the week after, but I'll stop there. So that will take us into November, and with that, we're adjourned.
And for those of you, I was just told it's the craziest play ever, it's all over social media, and something just happened.
It was insane. We had bases loaded.
Yeah.
Dodgers hit it, Sal just jumped.